What do you mean?
Well, I welcome everybody into tonight's meeting. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Hinckley Township Board of Trustees order. On Tuesday, July 29, 2025, it's 6:30 PM. Call the Royal Asherall.
Here.
Engelmann.
Here.
Sweattick here, also President Fiscal Officer Ray, Police Chief Sentner, Fire Chief Payne, Service Superintendent Bahary, five members of the Fire Department, and six members of the public, and one member of the press. I'd like to ask everyone to join in honoring our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's with our deepest sorrow that we regret to inform the community that Martha Cathwood has passed away. Martha was a dedicated and deeply respected member of our community, an unwavering advocate who worked effortlessly for the benefit of all. A longtime resident of Hinckley, she was not only a public servant, but also a cherished friend and neighbor to many. Her commitment to public service in Hinckley began in 2008 when she was elected township trustee. In 2017, she assumed the role of fiscal officer, a position she held with integrity and diligence until her retirement in November of last year. Throughout her years of service, Martha was a trusted source of guidance and support. Whether resident or colleague, all knew they could rely on her kindness, wisdom, and tireless dedication. Martha's passing is a profound loss. We will remember her not only for her contributions to our township, but for the warmth, humility, and strength of character she shared so generously. She was our colleague, she was our mentor, and she was our friend. She will be deeply missed by all whose lives she has touched. We extend our condolences to Martha's family, and we ask that you please keep Martha and her family in your thoughts and prayers. At this time, we invite you to join us in a moment of silence to honor her passing. Okay. To remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded for the public, and persons commenting must come to the podium to use a microphone stating their name and address for the record. I move to approve the minutes for the July 8, 2025, regular trustee meeting.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the July 11, 2025, special trustee meeting.
Second.
Looking for a motion.
Move. Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain, I was not there. Fiscal Officer.
Thank you, Jack. The first item on the agenda that I'd like to discuss is our general liability commercial insurance. Our current insurance policy is through the Ohio Township Association of Risk Management Authority, and the amount we paid last year was roughly $91,000. And then the amount that is due currently this year is approximately $116,000, a significant increase. And what I've asked is, our Summit Insurance Broker, Jim Zakara, is here today, and I might ask him, I talked to him earlier this week, asked him to come and speak to us specifically related to two things, one, to talk about why such a large increase, and number two, what actions we can take going forward to try to reduce that insurance premium in the future. So Jim, do you want to come up to the podium, and I'll turn it over to you?
First of all, I want to say that was my real honor to work with Martha. Very humble person, easygoing, funny, and always followed through with requests. That's very sad, and I'm sorry for your loss. Hinckley Township unfortunately is not alone in that big increase, and a couple of things account for that, primarily the overall loss history of the thousand-plus members for the past few years has been poor. And O-Tarmabai's reinsurance from reinsurance companies and the price, the price has gone up significantly. Last year was the first year in the history of O-Tarma since the mid-'80s where they took a rate increase. This past year was even more significant, and they did away with poorly-named credit that they have given every year called the loyalty credit. You all are very loyal to the program, but they should rename that. That was about $8,000. And then really, every line of coverage, the general liability, public officials, auto liability, auto physical damage and property saw an increase this year. I expect and hope that the ship is being righted where claims are not so bad. The insurance industry, and the insurance industry have softened a bit. It kind of hit a peak last year. You may have seen it in your homeowner auto, you know, your own personal household insurance expenses have gone up. So we all think that things are going to improve next year. To answer Rich's question specifically, and I would never just willy-nilly advise you to reduce your liability protection. You do have $7 million of liability protection, and of the townships that I work with, there's only one that has a higher liability limit than that. I'd say 90% have $3 million, which is the minimum. I'm hesitating because recently another township asked me about judgments in the program over $3 million, and it's been under 10. I don't think there's ever been a judgment over $4 million. So that would be a way to potentially reduce your premium, we call it a contribution. I know every year on the renewal proposal, there's an opportunity to increase your liability, and maybe that's through the years how you got to $7 million. I'm sure it's a comfort level, you know. The more is the better. You never know what's going to happen with the Police Department and Fire Department. Your exposure to large claims is higher than some neighboring townships, for instance. Your auto deductibles are fairly low at $250. I've checked with other townships and increasing that, and it's not as big a savings as you would think, but I think we should take a look at that. Your property deductible is $2,500. There's really not any coverages that you can, you know, take away or reduce. When a township has, the departments that you do, they're kind of built in. You know, you have cyber coverage, and I mentioned all the other coverages. I don't think you have flood or earthquake coverage. Those are things that you could buy. So really, raising deductibles or considering that and considering lowering your liability limit would be ways, but I really think that next year, certainly the rate increases are going to moderate. I haven't heard anybody say that the premiums are going to come down, but the board, the board will know around the first of the year, and I can communicate with Rich how the other township renewals are coming in. So you'd have plenty of time to plan and maybe do some things.
Jim, do we have the ability, because the premium is overdue, it's overdue by 30 days or so. If we make the payment this week and we decide in a month to come back and reduce those coverages, is it possible to do that midterm or during the term? Do we only have to do it, can we only do it at renewal?
I think you can only do it at renewal, unfortunately. You don't know this, Rich, I don't believe. We've had a brief conversation, Rich and I are going to meet. Other than fire vehicles, dump trucks, cruisers that you add midterm, we don't charge you for that. Similarly, if you delete a couple of dump trucks, we're not going to give you any money back. Fire trucks is considered property, we ensure that, and guaranteed replacement costs, and so we do make charge and give back if you make changes throughout the year for that.
Any questions?
Do you know when we increased to the $7 million? Like, how long we've been sitting at that?
It's been a while. Monique, I'll find out for you and get back to Rich. I don't know off the top of my head.
So the percentage increase was?
Including the loyalty credit, taking away that credit, it's about 28%.
Yeah.
Some have been higher, which doesn't make you feel any better.
Jack, if there's any solace, Martha, when she put the budget together for 2025, had, for whatever reason, had anticipated an increase. So the budget we have for 2025 does fully cover the premium increase. So we are not hitting our budget because we'd still be under budget, a couple thousand bucks, but she did cover that in our 2025 budget.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks very much.
With that, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the property insurance coverage for the 2025-2026 period that costs $116,397.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? As we go through this, I think that we'll probably have to see what other options are. Yeah, okay.
Definitely.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Rich, I'm going to have you hang on for a second, so the chief can take care of that.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, forgot about your folks.
I have two hiring requests. First one, I request to hire Cameron Bott. He's a part-time firefighter, paramedic, with starting rate of $20.50 per hour and a one-year probation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I believe that's a rehire.
That's rehire, correct?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second request to hire Michael McFadden as a part-time firefighter EMT with a starting rate of $16.50 per hour and a one-year probation period.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Where'd you find this young man?
I'll give that story here in a minute.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we want to start with Cameron?
So, hang on one second. So Cameron comes with quite a bit of experience. He spent two and a half years here and was an FTO for the Fire Department. He worked at Cleveland EMS for five and a half years before joining Hinckley, and now he's full-time fire in Parma Heights.
No, that's not it. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Right. Raise your right hand and rotate after me. I, Cameron Bott.
Hi, Cameron Bott.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of a volunteer fireman.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of a volunteer fireman.
For Hinckley Township and Medina County.
For Hinckley Township and Medina County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my service in the Fire Department.
During my service in the Fire Department.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Everybody? Done, everybody?
Everyone's small, yeah, we can.
Or do you want to wait until we do?
We can grab.
Say "fire!" There's me, Cameron.
Check it out before, I guess.
Okay, a little bit about Michael McFadden. He played baseball for his four years of high school. Before he went to Dominican University, Ohio Dominican University, where he played ball for another four years. He graduated four years with a degree in sports management. Michael worked about four months in the field, and he came home and told his mom Cheryl that he didn't like his job. He didn't like what he was doing, didn't want to sit behind a desk. So she asked him what he wanted to do, and he said he wanted to be a fireman. So Cheryl gave me a call, I could hear the little concern in her voice, but when I asked what he wanted to do, she told me a fireman. I sort of chuckled and smiled behind the phone as she couldn't see me. I told her that I would help him out, give him some guidance and steer him along. And once he got his firefighter certificate and his EMT, that I would put him on in Hinckley. So Michael was on his way to become a firefighter. Michael's going to be going to med school here in September. Okay. Because you were taught in fire school, that he just graduated in this past party, right, from fire school, you're taught about the fire family and depending on your team and your family. Okay, guys, come on in. So I brought another part of your family here. Unfortunately, Bronze Oak had a fire, so it took some people away from both sides. We couldn't plan that. So your extended family is here. So the backstory of this, I worked with Michael's dad, Matt, for over 30 years. We've had a lot of laughs, and yeah, he was pretty funny. We shed a lot of tears on the tailboards at night. Matt's life was cut short due to a medical condition. I sat back and I thought about Mike's life and my life, and even though we're a generation apart, we're a lot alike. We both grew up in a fire service. We're both second-generation firefighters. Our fathers both passed away at the same age. And our fathers now would look down and smile at us.
You're up.
I, Michael McFadden.
I, Michael McFadden.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a volunteer fireman for Hinckley Township.
Of a volunteer fireman for Hinckley Township.
In Medina County, State of Ohio.
Medina County, State of Ohio.
During my service in the Fire Department.
During my service in the Fire Department.
New families here, and your old families.
Everybody?
Yeah.
Everybody?
Yeah. Everybody, if you want me to picture.
I don't know how to do that.
Young guys, the only.
Go in the kitchen.
Family, want to get a picture? Guys are going to have to stand closer.
That's important. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Jim, did you just give them the right to leave? We are a full roster at this point, correct?
We are done for a while.
So we will not have any more of those for a while. That was a nice one to end it on.
Correct.
Welcome back, Cameron.
Rich. Feed the drool.
Thank you. The second item on the list is to give you an update. In our last meeting, they passed a motion for me to pursue getting bonded, which is required by the Ohio Revise Code. That costs $2,500. When we're talking to Jim with our insurance, is we have as part of our insurance a what's called a faithful performance of duty provision that basically covers me as a being bonded as a fiscal officer. So he anticipates that I'll have the paperwork next week to sign, no additional cost, so in effect, it won't cost us the $2,500 we had estimated the last time. Okay, so that's more of an update, so hopefully I'll be bonded officially by the end of next week. The third item on the list is a brief update on the budget. Wanted to let everybody know that we submitted the budget on July 15, which was the date it was required, so we met that deadline. The next deadline, so to speak, is September 19. That's when the Budget Commission from Medina County will review and approve what's called the estimated resources, which is their first crack at telling us what they anticipate the revenues to be, okay? And then from there, we may have to make adjustments, and then that'll be in place until January when they give us an actual number. So we're kind of on hold with respect to our budget until mid-September when the Medina County Budget Commission does get back to us. One of the things I will be doing in the month of August is meeting with the trustees individually and each of the department heads to go through two things of the budget. Number one, where we stand year-to-date and what we anticipate we'll be spending the rest of the year with respect to budget, whether it's looking at the expenses we anticipate, what we might carry over into 2026. The second part of it is looking at the 2026 budget, working on the line items, make sure everybody feels comfortable as to what's going to be coded in what particular line. So at that point, we'll have the ability to make some adjustments if you want to have something broken out separately to better monitor and track it. So I'll be setting up meetings with all of you, each of you, in the month of August to work through that. As part of that, I also want to start having discussions about what I'll call capital forecasts, which is kind of laying out what we anticipate larger capital outlays are, whether it's '25, '26, maybe into 2027, and start thinking about what we might be needing this year, next year, and the year after. Because some things, if they're higher priced, we'll have to set up monies this year to carry over into next year to make sure we cover it when the time comes. So that'll be part of those discussions as well, okay? Any questions? Okay. The next item on the list is related to the payment of payroll bills. Payroll on bills, and I'd like to start with a motion to pay bills in the amount provided by me for the period of July 8 through July 28, and that amount is $487,397.97.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
There's a couple of items that I do want to point out.
We need to do that.
I'm sorry.
Did you want to discuss?
There are a couple of ones I'd like to discuss.
Oh, sorry.
It's a large number, and I wanted to point out a couple of things. Number one included in that amount is our Ohio Public Works loan. We took out two loans back in 2018, 2019 for roughly $700,000, and that was to cover the original Brookside Drive and Valley Brook pavement redos. We have a 20-year loan, and it's zero interest. And that amount is roughly $28,000 every six months, and that will continue until 2040. We have the ability to pay it off at any time. The balance is currently around $500,000, and I recommend we continue just to make the payments, because it's zero interest, it's hardly any amount with respect to the budget, all right? Second item I wanted to mention is the parent invoice for $61,000, which is the remaining part of the parking lot, and that will complete that project from the same point of the bill. Also included in there is roughly $200,000 for Trimore, which is the Valley Brook, Brookhaven Oval and Salem Court project that was completed. There are three payments. Two have been approved by the county engineer, so we're making those two payments. There's a third one of roughly $25,000 that will be made once the county engineer approves it.
That was the Boston Commons? Yeah.
Yes, that was the one where the Ohio Public Works picked up $291,000 of that portion, so they picked up half of that project. And then also, you'll see two payments for Huntington credit cards, and we were behind a month on our payments, so we paid May and we also paid June, so that's in there as well, okay? So that's why it's rather large. I feel like we have made all of our payments, and we are caught up on all of our payments on a current basis now. So I think we won't see as large of an expense going forward on our next trustee meetings, okay?
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I have one other point I'd like to make that's not on the agenda, just FYI, is we received in the mail, just wanted to make the trustees aware, if I can find it, is basically we received the certified copy of Resolution 250566, which was approved by the Commissioners on the 22nd, which is basically the petition for the boundary line adjustment that had been filed by the City of Brunswick. So this is the official certified copy of that resolution that was previously approved by the Commission for that corner down there, 303 and 1. So I have that in case you guys are interested in.
Very good.
Okay? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Police.
Good evening. You have a foreword quote to repair our generator, which is now not working at all. If you recall, about a year ago, we did a stopgap repair to the radiator system that was failing, and we've gotten to this point that it is now needs replaced. So I'll request approval to pay Generator Systems LLC for the repairs to the department generator at a total cost of $8,303.32.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? What was the replacement on this, chief? Was there a?
Well, we are working on that right now.
Okay.
With these folks, because I think we're all in agreement that that generator is probably way bigger than what I think we're all in agreement that that generator is probably way bigger than what we need. And with that in mind, they are working on some price quotes for us to just completely replace the generator. So before we move forward with the repairs, we should have that that information within the next day or so.
Okay.
So if that comes in favorable and it makes sense to replace it, instead of fixing this one, it's 25 years old.
This is aging out, you're right.
Then I will come back to the board and we'll see what we want to do with that. But in the meantime, I'd like to get the repairs authorized. So we're not down any longer than we need to be.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I've got one other item before you. The sergeants have been working on putting together medical response kits for every one of our vehicles. They've been working with the fire department, which I appreciate, chief. I'm requesting an amount not to exceed $2,500 to North American Rescue to put all to put together all the stuff we need in these kits. So essentially, and chief, correct me if I'm wrong, because you're the medical guy, I'm not. It allows us to treat ourselves if we are victims of gunshot wounds or stabbings as well as victims and the not-so-good people we deal with if it comes to that. So in this day and age, you know, as crazy as the world's getting, we really need to have these kits in our cars.
And there are some supplies that will come from Cleveland Clinic to put in the kits also. That will not be a cost.
Like what?
Four-by-fours, Band-Aids, two-by-twos, sling, just minor medical stuff.
Okay.
We're able to get that from the hospital.
So roughly about four per vehicle? 400, 400?
Yes.
And it wasn't that we could not, we, the officers could not have epinephrine pens? Do you remember? Is that?
They're very costly. That could be.
I don't remember if there was an actual reason why officers could not care, you know, I mean, for like these things.
This costs, there's an expiration date, probably not, doesn't make sense to to have them.
I recall what you're talking about. It was quite a while back that we discussed that. And I believe cost was one of the the factors involved. And then those have to be maintained, you know, temperature-wise as well. So
I can't freeze.
Okay.
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And just a quick
Good idea to have something like that in all the vehicles.
And once we get the kits put together, the fire department's going to train all of us on how to use that equipment. So and just a quick update on the vehicles we sold at auction. To date, we have received $15,660 for the sale of those vehicles and we have one left to sell.
What's left?
The van, the Atlanta van. It actually sold for $3,500 and whoever won the bid backed out. So we put it back up yesterday.
Okay.
Nope, that's all I got. Thank you.
And your parking lot's a little cleaner.
It's a little less cluttered.
Player?
I request a motion for WW Williams to make emergency repairs to Engine 31 Pollution Control System with the cost not to exceed $5,000. The head-on ADF system, which has the sensors and computers on that on it. We've been babying along for the past couple of weeks, taking it up there every couple of days to get the lights turned off so it doesn't shut down on us. So with your approval, it will go on tomorrow to get repaired.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? Had they addressed this in the past? And is this the one that?
No, this is a new issue here.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. Did you just say good? It's a new issue.
Yeah.
Request a motion for WW Williams to perform the annual maintenance pump testing, ladder testing, required NFP inspections on Engine 31 and Tanker 32, but takes a cost not to exceed $1,700 each. I called WW Williams a few months ago. I went up there with Brunswick Hills Fire Chief and actually Seville's chief came up. And we sat down and we hashed out some prices. They guaranteed them for a year. So we got some really good prices guaranteed for a year for work, service, maintenance, pump test. In the past, you know, we were taking the trucks to Kylaga Falls or wherever and we were paying for transportation or we were paying our guys to, you know, our personnel to drive them there and drive them back. So Williams is only up the street. We had some issues with them back in December. I know I said I'd never go there again, but actually they've cleaned house. They got a lot of new people and they're really eager to get business back.
Why we never say never? So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Request motion for general maintenance to perform brake repair on Medic 37, the cost not to exceed $1,500. Now, so it should be the worst-case scenario. It just started grinding the other day on us squeaking, so.
When's the last time those were done on that one?
I, that's our oldest vehicle and when we put the engine in, I'm not sure on that.
Okay.
It's been a while.
Okay.
If ever, actually.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I request a motion to accept Brad Polash's resignation effective August 1, 2025. Brad's since been hired by Brook Park is full-time. He's on Valley City part-time. He lives, I think, North Ridgeville, so he, when I came on, he was originally going to resign and he agreed to stay to get us through the hard times, so he feels it's time to go.
Well, thank you for staying on. So moved?
Second.
The last thing I have is I'd like to thank
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Trying to get on. I would like to thank both Josh Spanula, which resigned in our last meeting, and Brad Polash for the years of service to Hinkley Fire Department. I didn't get a chance to do it the last meeting.
Agreed.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Service?
I do have one thing on the list tonight. I was talking to Suzanne. I don't know if she discussed anything about the Jeep that she's driving, about looking at getting a backup camera. She discussed that at all with anybody or?
Yeah, she mentioned that she had talked to you about.
I keep forgetting to bring it up. So I was like, you know what, this is something you're thinking about. I would like to do a do-not-exceed cost of 200 bucks to get a camera, a backup camera on Amazon for a Jeep. And then we'll install it for, yeah, there's, there'll be a lot cheaper than that, but there's a lot of options.
So the Jeep is very old, doesn't have any backup camera capabilities.
Like me.
No comment there.
Really?
And sometimes in the locations she goes, she used to back out and it really would help her see. So for 200.
That's, yeah, that'll cover. And then it'll be a couple extras, like if we gotta run some wiring or whatever.
So 200 is enough?
Yeah, we'll make that work.
All right, so I'd make that motion on. That's okay. It's kind of zoning. To purchase a backup a camera for not to exceed $200.
From where?
From Amazon for the zoning Jeep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Zoning.
Sue, we've got a parcel split. This was tabled from last meeting. Just sign this. This is a Burris property on Mattingly. They're splitting off a two-acre parcel with appropriate front, so let's have two of these signed. The other thing zoning related, next week at County Planning Commission is going to be a review of the Countrybrook Cove site plan. They are extending their driveway and making a cul-de-sac in that driveway. So that's just an FYI. And just to clarify, because there's some confusion, the Countrybrook, and I think I may have talked about this before, but the Countrybrook Cove is a one-home development that's off of Countrybrook essentially. And then the north side of that is the Sanctuary Court Development, which is a 15-home development. So they're two different projects, two different developments, but activities kind of taking place simultaneously. So sometimes there's questions and confusion, especially people thinking that it's just one large development, but it's in fact two separate developments. The 15-home Sanctuary Court development will have entry off of 303, you know, while the one-house development is off of what used to be Don Preling, but is now named Serenity Court. So this is a revision to that one-house development where they're adding a cul-de-sac, which they will maintain. You know, there's still an HOA agreement that they will maintain that. So
Anyways, are all minimum of two-acre homes?
Oh, the Sanctuary Court are all minimum two-acre. A lot of them a little bit more than two acres. So yes. And the one house development is like five more acres. So just wanted to point that out. That's for next week. That's it for zoning.
Lynn had asked me to ask you about, is it a question about Denise Testa coming to our next meeting or?
I'll get to that. That's not related to that.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll get to that.
Okay.
To
I thought Planning Commission might be related, but I guess.
No, it's not Planning Commission. No, it's county planning related. Next cemetery, we have a deed to sign. So we'll need a couple of witnesses. The Jim boys or whoever wants to come.
See, we should do this for the fire guys that we gotta get a couple of new names.
This is true. This is the 29th day, right?
The 29th.
Correct.
Oh.
Right here. Oh, using this one?
It's there. I think the other one is.
And you brought your own pens?
Oh, I just. Yeah, usual. That's for that, really. Witness?
Witness.
Yeah.
Well, they are signing that. Just want to ask you both if there's any objection to posting the statement regarding Martha on the website and on social media. There's a lot of people who do not know.
That would be good. Okay, well, since you brought it up, we'll start with the Denise Testa request. Let me just pull that up. Ah, here we go. Okay, so the County Planning Department is visiting all the townships along with Solid Waste District to on the topics of fair housing and talking about solid waste districts. Their goal is to gain a deeper understanding of the needs and concerns of the residents and to identify meaningful ways their departments can provide support, whether through grant opportunities, enhanced services, or new initiatives. So they expect the discussion to take between 20 to 30 minutes and they'd like to make that presentation at a trustee meeting. So Lynn had talked about the August 12 date. One of the things that I would like to do in conjunction with that is to have the Comprehensive Plan Committee members attend that discussions. They can hear also what's being said. It's kind of relating to future planning. So I don't know if August 12 is too soon to get that on everybody's calendars, whether we might want to consider looking at the first meeting in September, which I think is like September 9th.
Because they can't do the 26th?
Oh, I guess the 26th of August. I guess that's a possibility.
Is everybody going to be in Tim for that?
Well, it's like the first week of school.
Second, second. They start them earlier and earlier.
I know. So that's kind of why I was looking at September because by then, kind of back in the
The night, well, yeah, we could do the 9th because that is our meeting and it's the week after Labor Day, so.
Because what I would do is
I have, I have no conflicts on the 9th. You're not here?
No.
Jack has a conflict.
Oh. Okay.
So
How about the 23rd?
The 20? Oh, the 23rd of September. I mean, it's really pushing it out. Are they okay?
You know, she's got to get through all the townships in in the county. I mean, we could go for the 26th. I've got two members of the committee sitting there. August 26th, if we could do that. And I'm kind of thinking also that maybe I'm going to do this something a little different for September schedule. So maybe this will be in lieu of a September scheduled meeting? Possibly. Maybe.
Would it would it make more sense to have them come on? Well, no, you don't want to elongate the planning commission.
Right, yeah.
So, okay.
And I think
Is one of them that Barb Wall?
Barb?
Walton?
I think so, yes.
Because in the original email, it said Barb is not available and there's a bunch of dates in there where she's not available.
I don't know if I
September 19, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 29, 30.
August 20
I don't think I see.
6 would be August 26 would work with her schedule. And two of our planning.
It looks like she's off the end of September.
Yeah, basically.
And the beginning of October.
Oh, so that kind of tells you they're going all the way out there. So August 26th?
We could do that tentatively. We could do that tentatively. Do you want to reach out to the planning commission?
Well, yeah.
Or, um, I'm sorry, the steering committee?
Well. Do you think?
I mean, that's what you said. You wanted them to be present.
Like, I like to have them present, so we can tentatively say August 26th. I'll, I'll send an email. First of all.
If they can't attend, our meetings are online. They could always just watch the 15 minute presentation online.
I just need to confirm with the two presenters that they'll be available on that Tuesday for us. So, and then I'll put an email out to the, the Planning Committee, Conference of Plan Committee. So tentatively, the 26th though.
Okay.
All right.
And that's just going to be at the beginning of our meeting, so it's not a special meeting.
Correct. No, it'll be at the beginning of the meeting and people don't have to stay for the whole meeting or they can watch it on Zoom if they want, really, so.
Or YouTube.
Or YouTube.
Later.
That's right. Okay, um, next is the Department of Commerce is going through their.
Show a lot of stuff. We're looking at you. There's a lot of stuff.
I know. Right. Well, I got this in the mail. It's, it's the time where all Class C and D retail permits that for selling alcoholic beverages are going to expire on October 1, 2025. And so the Department of Commerce is just wondering if anybody has any objections to any of these establishments for having their applications renewed. And if so, they need to be sent to the Department of Liquor Control by September 2nd.
Before.
So.
We've done that before. Chief usually reviews it.
Yeah, so that's what I'm thinking. Did you get a copy of this?
Have not.
Have you seen? It's addressed to trustees, so it's, I don't know if you get a copy.
I typically do. I'm not sure why I didn't this time, but.
All right. Well, I'll get you, I'll get the copy made. We just pulled down all the ones that have active licenses. I'm sure you know which ones they are.
I don't think there's really an issue with any of them.
Very small.
Several years ago, we got rid of the problem place, so.
We have another update on the Westland virus mosquito sampling.
Yeah.
I suppose we can post the newest, we'll post the newest.
The one from today.
Yeah, so I talked to Lynn about whoever in tomorrow will do that. And the last, but not least item, so you know, we had the power outage last Thursday, which created quite a bit of issues, particularly with our phone system. And basically, the server that holds the voicemail and the auto attendant crashed and it's a dead crash. That server was put in 2015 and has never been maintained. So combination of Lighthouse and TTX can work to restore that voicemail system. They did find a refurbished server for like $650. And then TTX and Lighthouse, they'll reconfigure it and then reload from most current backup, which seems to be the day of the power outage. So there may not be much that's missing, if anything. So I would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a replacement voicemail server and the associated work by Lighthouse and TTX configure and install the server at a cost not to exceed $1,655.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you for taking the lead on that as I was out of town with all of that happened, so thank you.
Yep, well.
And this will go away with the upgrade we're looking at.
Yes, unfortunately, we have to do this, but when we go to the new phone system, we will not have hardware on our premises that we have to worry about that kind of stuff in the future.
All in favor?
Hi. And we are still waiting on prosecutor's office?
Yes, the prosecutor has sent his revisions to the prospective vendor. And so now waiting back to see whether they accept those revisions or whether, you know, they have revisions to the revisions. Hopefully, we'll be close to being able to go forward. And, and I guess maybe a question I would have for you because if, if we don't, so if we find out everything is good to go, then I might like to call a special meeting later this week. Would you guys have any issue time wise to do that? Otherwise, we have to wait till August?
The later, the later the better for me, both in the week and also time of day.
Time of day.
I don't think I would.
Okay, and, and in the event that, like, we don't find out till Friday and you're gone next week, would you, would you want us to wait till you return?
No.
To present that, or could we do a special meeting?
Do a special meeting without me, yeah. I mean, you know, technology really is my forte.
I know.
So I'm sorry that I won't feel the way in.
Well.
I just remembered, I forgot to say to you. Is that it right? Right? You are.
There you did.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you. And that's it. I'm done.
Are you sure?
I am sure unless you bring something else, so.
It's the Ash role.
Okay, I would like to thank the Bicentennial Committee and really our entire community for really just the wonderful memorable day that we had for the Bicentennial. It was, a lot, a lot of work went into it over the last two years from the committee. And it was so nice to see so many community members step up and really, really help out the community in it. So thank you to our service department who was busting their butts, getting it all done, and our police and fire department also for all, all the extras that you guys did. It was a fun day. Um, a reminder that movie night, our next movie night is August 16th. I'm hoping for no rain so we can have that outdoors. And fiscal officer Fay, I'm so happy that you were able to save us that $2,500. I would ask the board, we are out of donor money from our last donor, so I would ask the board if we could just go ahead and purchase the rights to the movie this year or for this movie. We still have another one in October. And that would be a move to approve the rental rights from Swank Motion Pictures at a cost not to exceed $500 for the August 16th movie night.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Does it die hard?
That's going to be Christmas.
That's Christmas.
All in favor?
Hi. Thank you. Um, I also wanted to start picking your brains for the annual newsletter that's going to be going out in October. Since we are not in the middle of signing a new contract, what are your thoughts to adding an insert inside of that newsletter for the opt outs this year? Though kill two birds with one stone.
I don't think that's a bad idea. I mean.
I would say it reverse. I'd say it's a pretty good idea.
Oh.
But that would be, you know, a compliment.
Okay.
So I think.
And it came from me.
So I think that would be fiscally responsible.
I am going to begin researching the cost, so I just wanted to see if you were both open to that before I started looking at some of the different vendors. You had explored some other vendors.
That would make sense.
Okay, thank you. And then Chief Sentner had done a little bit of research for me about a month ago, six weeks ago, about adding to our external security cameras. We had the new ones put on the police station about a year ago and we had talked about maybe adding some to Town Hall so that we get a better shot of the intersection, Bicentennial Plaza. Um, take it away.
I met with Ken Zadar. He, that Zadar Technology did our cameras at the police station. When we upgraded our system, our system will more than handle the additional cameras. They will be wirelessly connected to our system. So this building will have six cameras around it. It will face towards the Historical Society, the Veterans Park, and the intersection to some degree. I, I think it's, it's just under $10,000 to add those six cameras and wirelessly hook them to our system. I think it's a good idea to do that and gives us a little more security on the property.
Any concerns or?
That's front end costs and then it's, it's not a.
We don't pay. That's front end. That's it.
Yeah. Considering the, the coverage it provides and.
The investment that's.
Particularly with the clock there now, I think it's a worthwhile investment.
And I think, you know, when it's, when it's winter time and it's dark out, it's also.
Maybe we get an insurance discount with camera coverage.
We'll probably have to check for the cameras.
I think it's a good idea. It's nice that it's integrated then in your system, so.
Yeah, there's no hardware in this building except for the router to ship it across the parking lot.
Right.
Are we ready for motion?
I would think.
Sorry, you guys, we're very.
Would this come out of Batman, Rich?
I think in this case, it would make sense since we're covering this building.
Mm-hmm.
I wasn't volunteering to pay for it.
You are?
No.
Oh.
No.
What's, what's the full name of Zadar?
Zadar Tech.
Zadar Technologies Incorporated.
You mentioned something about a router.
Yeah, there's a, they're all wirelessly, the cameras are wirelessly connected and then it connects to.
Oh, to your, your building, okay.
So there's no deck over here or.
There's no hardware, network hardware here.
No. They think that worked for them.
And Chief, you said that's six cameras?
Six cameras, yes.
Okay. I would move to hire Zadar Technologies Incorporated at a cost not to exceed $10,000 for the purchase and installation of six new outdoor security cameras.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi. Thank you very much for looking into that for me. I appreciate it.
You're welcome, and I will get ahold of Mr. Zadar tomorrow, Thursday, and get the ball rolling.
Thank you, Dave.
That's all I have.
Okay. A discussion about public meeting notifications, the the information went to the prosecutor's office where it still is. They're reviewing it to see exactly what we need to do to put in place a prepared resolution. I'm not sure that he's going to say that that's required since the existing ORC code specifies that you'll do it in accordance with state law. So at any rate, I have drafted a procedure that was also sent to and once we hear back from the prosecutor's office, we'll be a little forward on that. That is the update on that. So at this time, I will move to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official for the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual in accordance with ORC 121.22 at 7:35 PM.
Second.
Second by Ashrell. I'll call the role Ashrell.
Yes.
Engelmann.
Yes.
Sweattick, yes.
Did you want to do public comment before?
Yeah, we can, yeah, since we could be a bit, we'll, we'll take, we'll table that for a moment. Do public comments, anything?
Jim Larson, 20 Car Road. I had a question regarding the budget, in specific, the carryover portions of the budget. Is that, are those funds that are carried over, are they committed funds to projects that just haven't billed yet? Or are they just unencumbered funds that just carry over from one year to the next?
Combination of both. If, for example, let's say in October, talking to the service department, they decide that, hey, we need a new truck and they estimate it costs, say, $80,000 as an example. With the combination of what we have left to spend this year as well as next year, what we would probably do is create a purchase order, which then makes those encumbered funds or a certain portion and then carry that over into next year to combine it with additional funding for that second year. Okay. Those, I would say somewhat limited as to how many of those encumbered funds we carry over. Generally, from what I've seen and looking at the past couple of budgets, it's been for those larger purchases, whether it's a street project, a vehicle or a fire or police service, that kind of stuff. I couldn't tell you what percentage was, but I would think a majority of it was the unencumbered funds that would carry over to be used.
Yeah, I'm not looking for specifics. I'm just wondering how it works.
Well, Jim, I would tell you, like, for instance, when they built the fire station, that was done without a tax levy. So those funds were carried over year to year to year until they had enough to pay for it. And that's what they did in advance. Same thing, similar with large fire equipment. It gets carried over. It's, it's on your budget, but you're not going to expend it that year because you don't have enough yet.
And what, and I don't really care about, not interested in the amounts, but what about unearmarked, unencumbered funds that they carry over from 2025 to 2026? At, how is that looked at by the county in their budgeting process? Because in the world I came from, from business, if you don't spend it, you got to go right back again and ask for it. Does, you know, does the county look to say, well, they carried over a million dollars? We're going to carve a million dollars out of their existing budget because they're carrying over an earmarked million dollars. I hate to say an amount. An amount is not earmarked for anything. Are you penalized for it is really what I'm getting to.
Couple of things. I've only been a fiscal officer for 29 days. But from what I've, from what I've read, A, you're right. Unlike some government agencies, et cetera, if you don't spend it, you lose it. It doesn't apply here. Number two is from what I've read, the County Budget Commission does have the authority to reduce any tax revenues if they feel that the amount you're going to carry over is significantly beyond what, quote unquote, would be considered normal. The third thing, what I've read, and I'm not 100% sure as to the current status, but there is legislation in the state of Ohio that is going through that whole property tax issues and stuff. Part of the, the provisions of that is cap of the carryover at 30%. And I've not seen where that currently stands with respect to whether it's all the way through or be to that kind of stuff. But that has been discussed as a way to, again, I think, to prevent entities from carrying over a really large number amount from the standpoint of, hey, if you're not going to spend it at some point, should you give it back to the taxpayers? But again, that's more of a discussion point as opposed to anything. But the, maybe the Budget Commission does have the authority, if they choose to, if you carry over a significant number.
Mm-hmm. So it almost behooves the township to carry over as little as possible or just carry over some prudent amount to cover unexpected expenses.
My goal would be to carry over amounts similar to the prior year. But at the same time, if we look at it and it looks like it's greater than what we would think is reasonable, to look at our capital outlays and say, is there items that we should designate this year, whether it's a vehicle to say, let's. this year, whether it's a, a vehicle to say, let's earmark that, which then reduces the unencumbered amount. And then we report that in our budget files and say, these are the, the capital outlays that we expect in the following year.
So as the year progresses, the four of you would get together at some point and review the budget and maybe purchase things that you might not otherwise purchase this year.
As one possibility or identify things that would require a couple of years of budget build.
Yeah.
Cover something significant, yeah.
I, I.
Trying to get that forward-looking view of.
Yeah, I was just, uh, I was just curious how that, how that process works. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right. At this time, we will adjourn to executive session at seven forty-one P M.
I would love it if you had.
Move to adjourn out of executive session and return to open session at eight thirty-three P M.
Okay.
Second by Ashroll. Ashroll?
Yes.
Engelmann.
Yes.
Sweattick, yes. At this time, we, uh, have discussed at length, uh, the disparity in pay for the service department relative to the improvements that have happened and, uh, uh, the need to do some things for retention. And, uh, fiscal officers advise us there is adequate funding to make some changes there. And so at this time, I will, uh, move to accept the service department pay rates effective August two, twenty-twenty-five as follows. Service superintendent, thirty-seven dollars sixty-nine cents per hour. Service class one, thirty dollars forty-two cents per hour, and service class two, twenty-eight dollars seventy-four cents per hour.
Second.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will move to set the service department pay increases as follows. Three-point-five percent increase in January twenty-twenty-seven. Three-point-seven-five percent increase in January twenty-twenty-eight. And four percent increase in January twenty-twenty-nine.
Second.
Second by Ashroll. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. This, uh, I think this is a good thing. It puts us, uh, something that the previous fiscal officer wanted us to look at, uh, getting on a schedule. I think we've done that and accomplished that as well as, uh, hopefully setting the stage, uh, to keep some very valuable employees that, uh, work for us and, uh, doing a great job. The, the economies that we've realized over the last several years uh, are gonna more than cover this, uh, this change, so appreciate that. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, I will move to adjourn at eight thirty-five P M.
Second.
Second by Ashroll. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.